Good evening. I'd like to call the Teaching Learning Subcommittee Meeting to Water. And with your permission, Mr. Superintendent, we'll turn it right over to
That'll be great. Thank you.
our principal.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to be here and I'm glad to be opening up the last, the final round of elementary school improvement plan presentations.
We're glad, too.
Probably more than you are.
You don't even know.
So any opportunity that I have to talk about Atherton How is a pleasure. I think you know that. And I appreciate your time tonight, as well as the time that you've spent reviewing our school improvement plan. For this presentation, I'd like to share a few reflections on building the plan, as well as highlight some data. I'd also like to make sure there's time for any questions that you may have. So first, and you probably know, we are the smallest elementary school in Quincy as far as enrollment. We have nineteen classes. Twelve of those classes are general education classes, two at each grade, K to five, and seven of those nineteen classes are substantially separate programs, one transitional kindergarten program in six classes as part of the citywide language development program. I always like to acknowledge this, as it illustrates the amount of special education students we have at each grade, particularly the number of those students participating in statewide assessments. And as I very soon highlight, some of the successes of our goals, knowing this collaborative effort and planning between general education and special education. So while we were thrilled to see many more smiles as masks are being removed, more school-wide activities and cross-grade level activities are being planned, we do continue to recognize the significance the pandemic has had on all of our students academically, socially, and emotionally. We see this in our benchmark data. We see this in the amount of referrals still being made to our guidance office. We see this in how teachers have restructured their lessons and daily class routines to include more mindfulness activities and social-emotional lessons through the Open Parachute Program at all grade levels. We continue to help our students and their families maintain a very important sense of stability in their lives. Every single staff member recognizes the importance of building strong relationships with their students. And at any time, you will see a staff member going out of their way to check in with a student or a family to ensure they have what they need. Some kids come in early because that helps them. Some have lunch with their teacher because that helps. Some stay after school. Where I once discouraged teachers from texting parents, a COVID keeper for some, a quick morning check-in, "Oh, we're missing David today. We hope to see him soon." We're giving students what they need and families. We ask our families, "How best should we communicate with you? What can we do to help as we work with your child?" We build trust and we communicate. Each month, myself, my guidance counselor, and school psychologist work with each grade level of teachers to run community meetings with the grade. We started this last year and we've really enhanced it this year. We gather together as a grade each month and have a community meeting on a topic relevant to the grade. Last week, we met with our third grade. Our topic was reactions and how it looks when we may have big feelings or emotions, and how that impacts ourselves and our relationships with others. We met in our community circles to discuss coping strategies. We name the term. Students have a chance to share something they do to help calm down, something an adult could do to help them calm down. These community meetings we have each month are an example of one of our action steps to continue to support our social-emotional learning goal. They have been so vital to helping all of our students share, listen, and learn from one another, and connect, and feel valued. Not only do our student support teams work together, our academic teams do as well and plan important action steps that take considerable collaboration and intentional planning. Last year, based on our data review, we had identified one area of focus for each of our academic goals and we built in specific targeted action steps for them. I'm happy to report that we met our school-wide goal for ELA and math. As you can read in the goal analysis, students in grades two through five had a goal to demonstrate positive growth in reading and math as measured by the MAP RIT score from the fall 2021 to spring 2022. In both ELA and math, all grade two through five met or exceeded their RIT growth goal. We didn't set our goals with MCAS as a measure last year, but of course, we still analyze the data and it's an important part of our planning for this year's school improvement plan. Aligned with the state data analysis between 2021 and 2022, we did see more signs of recovery in positive growth in math as compared to ELA. At each tested grade for ELA on MCAS, we saw a decrease in the student's earning proficiency as compared to the proficiency levels earned in 2021. In math, however, with the exception of grade three, the number of fourth and fifth graders earning proficiency increased from 2021, and we also encourage, are encouraged that both of our fourth grade and fifth graders proficiency levels this year exceeded the state proficiency levels in math. We do acknowledge that grade three, or our current fourth graders, have the greatest level of academic need. And these benchmark assessments, the MAP and the MCAS, are very reliable measures of their classroom performance. They are our highest priority as we work at all grades to continue to raise proficiency and close that gap. Although we did not meet our school-wide science goal, we actually celebrated our results in science the loudest. And I'm going to do that here as well. In science, we actually indicated time as an area of focus. Our science scores have been historically lower than the district in the state. Important action steps we created last year for more time, such as school-wide initiative, extended day programs, including more science during our media time, and highlighting science on my morning announcements. Forty-eight percent of our fifth graders earned proficiency on the 2022 assessment, an increase of fourteen percent of students from 2021. This proficiency level was also five percentage points above the state proficiency in grade five. Also, out of a possible fifty-four points on the science MCAS, we scored fifty-eight percent correct, the very same as the district, and two points higher than the state. So why did we not meet our goal? We focused on our MAP growth as a measure. Both grade four and five set a goal to increase their MAP RIT by seven points. Grade four met their increase goal, but grade five missed the increase by one point. We have a theory on that, and we are going to be intentional this year as we look at some calendar adjustments for testing. We're thinking it was a little test fatigue at the end of the year. So we would still, however, like to acknowledge the significant growth in science as a school. And again, another indicator of our powerful planning, collaboration, and delivery of really meaningful action steps. Also, I can't help but note, out of the fifty-two fifth graders that took the science MCAS last spring, sixteen of those students, or thirty percent, were in our substantially separate program. For these scores to be aligned with the district and above the state are worth a check in the goal met box for me. For this year, we'll see we focus on both MAP and MCAS as measures for growth in ELA, math, and science. You'll also see we will be using the Amplify M-Class measure for the primary grades in our reading goal. You might also have noticed that our goals are much more rigorous than in years before with our projected increase of students' earning proficiency on the MCAS. We are committed to our action steps and to work diligently as a dedicated school staff to help each student make progress in all areas. Below the action steps for each goal in the school improvement plan, I selected three pictures that I included in the plan that, in my opinion, highlight really important action steps already well underway in our first term of this school year. Finally, I'd like to end my presentation with a quote within an email from a parent this year that she sent me this fall after her fourth-grade son came home and was talking about how he could raise awareness to the fact that not all have access to clean water. She wrote, "Thanks for opening their eyes to situations around the world and inspiring change." You may remember, we worked with this book last year, This Is How I Do It, where we learned about seven students throughout the world. This year, we read this throughout the whole year, school-wide. This year, after reading a story called "A Thirst for Home" in fourth grade, a story about a mother who walks miles each day for water for her family in Ethiopia, a club was formed by that student that came home and talked to his mother. The club consists of some fourth and fifth graders. They work during their lunch and recess time and they're working to raise enough money to fund a water project by Charity Water, which would provide clean water for an entire community or an entire school in an underdeveloped country. This T-shirt was designed by our students in the club, each student drawing one of these symbols. While this Kids Can Make a Difference Club is not an action step in this plan that you have in front of you, it illustrates to me all of the school improvement, the rewarding work that we are doing, not just at Atherton How, but all throughout Quincy, of working with our younger students, teaching them and giving them the tools and the voice to grow academically, socially, and emotionally in the meaningful impacts it makes each day. Again, I thank you for your time and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Santoro?
No, just congratulations. When I happened to be at the School for the Backpack distributions.
Yes, that was great.
And saw all those excited faces in the gymnasium. It was just a warm, welcoming environment. And that's a reflection upon you and your staff. Kids are happy to be there. I congratulate you on your grade four and five scores being where they are in expectations. And just thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to reiterate that and also say that I was really impressed how you wrote your action steps to incorporate those things in the focus areas and also bringing the Amplify into that.
Yes.
It was really nice to see that. You put so much thought into that. And also, your family engagement looks really strong. It was fun to see. I'm so glad I don't have to do the polar plunge. It was great to see the sample of the newsletter. I really got a feeling, and I think any parent who would read that would really get a feeling of what was going on. So it was great to see that. We're going to move your facility stuff into the Facility Subcommittee meeting. So we won't be talking about that here, but I'm very impressed with your goals for next year. They are rigorous. But I think you've got a plan and action steps that can aim there. And you're going to reach one of them, and they're both good, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Maybe both.
Absolutely.
But I appreciate how rigorous they are.
Thank you.
Mr. Burgholli?
I hate to keep bringing this stuff up, but when I was high, my first assignment was Atherton How School.
Yes.
And I spent three years there with Ed Bakari as the principal. And
Red Riley.
Pardon me?
Red Riley in the custodian.
Yes, he was. He ran the school. The Hausnecht community is amazing, and you don't know it until you are a part of it. And you become a real part of it when you're teaching the kids or doing anything out there. And it's still, a lot of people are still the same people that I had in class.
Right.
Which speaks to the whole community.
Sure.
So it's just a great place to, it was a great place to teach, and I'm sure it still is.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Burgholli?
Thanks. Thank you so much for the presentation. When you speak about your school, you always have such passion and it's wonderful. It totally resonates to us.
Great, thank you.
I know we were going to move into facilities, but I got to ask you about install a window in the space built in the principal's office.
Yes.
That just stuck me as I have to ask about that. What is that about?
So so this is the passion for the school, I guess. So when we returned from COVID shutdown and we needed to kind of rearrange a lot of things within the school, I ended up relocating my school nurse. I knew we needed a bigger space and, you know, with a lot of the restrictions. So Mr. Burgholli, the school nurse, moved to the principal's office. The principal's office has always been, it's even engraved in the door, "Principal's Office." So I brought the nurse to the principal's office because it was a much more conducive space. I don't know why. I hadn't done it before. And so it left me without a space. I couldn't move into the nurse's office. She was upstairs and it wasn't conducive for a principal. So I took over across the hall, the meeting space, because I knew we weren't having any meetings that year. But it also didn't have a window. It's the back of a stage and it's just a conference room. And sure enough, that's where I still am because I like the nurse where she is. And I worked with, you know, Mr. Paul Hines and the maintenance department, and they put in some ventilation over the summer, and now we're working on a window.
Okay.
And that's where I am.
Okay, that's much better. I'm reading this and I'm visualizing like
That's what I was visualizing.
a hole in the wall and going, what is she talking about?
And so they broke through concrete and made a little window, just to make it a little bit more open for me because we are having meetings now, but it just works better for the school and I don't need a big space.
I agree. You should have a window in your office. But I, yes. And could you also get us some more information about the T-shirts?
Yes, I would love to. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Santoro?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo Mr. Burgholli. I mean, Atherton is the epitome of a neighborhood school. It really is kind of the centerpiece of everything that happens in Hausnecht. And people are super proud of it. You're doing an amazing job. I echo all of the comments of my colleagues. The one thing that was inspiring that you said was how that the reading tied to a club, which is leading to really societal impact, students making societal impact, which I think is such a great message, you know? To me, that inspires me, that the students read this and they wanted to make a difference. And what a great thing to teach at the elementary level. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And your class size is outstanding.
Yes.
So really doing a great job with that. The class size is incredible. Okay, I'd like to, you guys all set?
All set.
I'd like to entertain a motion to a motion through the plan by Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Santoro, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Deion. You are on, sir.
All right. So thank you all for the opportunity to present to you tonight so that I can share all the wonderful things happening at Bernazani this year. I'm entering my seventeenth year as principal at Bernazani. Does anybody who know Doug McDonald or remember Doug McDonald? Yeah, so Doug was the longest-serving at seventeen years, so I tie him this year.
Congratulations.
I know, it's crazy, but so fortunate and so blessed to have this position and lead the school and that community. So I appreciate that. Let's start at the beginning on page five, and I'll walk you through some of the data. About five years ago, we began using Edwin Report 301 as an indicator for our strengths and weaknesses. This report shows us how many percentage points we are ahead of or behind the state for each standard. So if we're lagging behind the state, we consider that a weakness. And if we're ahead of the state, we consider that a strength, and then we can improve from there. In this plan, I've highlighted areas in which we are well above the state. For your perusal in the data reflection piece, the areas where we need improvement, I've listed below each goal further on in the document. So if you just take a look at page five, again, I picked the highest percentages above the state and I'm just so proud of that in these particular standards. And when you get down to fifth grade, math and science, we're as many as twenty-six percentage points above the state in some of the standards. Those are just really solid scores this year, especially with our accountability percentile jumping up eight points from a sixty-eight to a seventy-six. So we really celebrated that as a staff and attribute that, again, to our centers. I work with centers and making sure the kids have exactly what they need. So at this point, if you could please turn to page six. I'm happy to report that we exceeded all of our goals in ELA, math, and science at each grade level with the singular exception of fifth grade English Language Arts on the MAP. So our students made progress in fifth grade ELA, but did not meet our expectation of growth. But we were so pleased to celebrate this as a staff, and now we know that these SMART goals are achievable and that we're writing the goals correctly. On page seven, you will find our vocal survey results. I wanted to share our high percentage categories with you tonight. So I wrote in the plan here, there's nothing I'm more proud of than these two statements. We got a hundred percent from students in two categories, and that's adults in this school treat all students with respect, which is, again, nothing better to get a hundred percent from the kiddos on that. And then my teachers care about me as a person. Those were our two unanimous questions, which I'm so proud of. The other categories I listed are, I'm happy to be at our school at ninety-six percent. Students will help other students if they're upset at ninety-eight percent, which I love, too. With, we've been doing peace builders for years, so that speaks a lot to that. Teachers at the school accept me for who I am at ninety-seven percent. Students like to have friends who are different from themselves at ninety-seven percent. My teachers will explain things in different ways until I understand at ninety-eight percent, which is so great. And then if I tell a teacher or other adult that someone is being bullied, the teacher, adult, will do something to help, ninety-eight percent. So that's just a credit to my staff. There was one thing that concerned us. It was such a strange thing that jumped out. The statement, "I read books in class that include people who are similar to me." Fifty-nine percent of kids said that's true, forty-two percent untrue. And well before EDI or anything, we had a team that was purchasing books for our library and classrooms. We had a grant. We had a donation from a donor. And we're purchasing books specifically for the purpose of diversifying our classrooms and library with books that represent a rich expanse of cultural differences. I think our misstep was not presenting these books or making them more readily available for our students. For instance, students don't check out holiday books, the holiday books in the library, unless we make a special holiday display so they can see the covers. So our plan is to do the same for our diversity section in order to get these books into the hands of our students. I think the more they see them, the more, instead of just being hidden in the bookshelf. So we're on top of that, but not being reflected by the students. So we'll make sure we bring that to them. On page eight, if you turn the page, you'll see the beginning of our goals section. We made two changes this year. As a staff, we love to use the RIT points as an indicator from the MAP testing because it tells us how much growth the students in front of us have made that year. Using MCAS as an indicator compares two different groups of students from year to year, so it's not as helpful for servicing the students that are in front of us in real time. With that being said, we felt like MCAS is still a wealth of data, so we don't want to exclude that in our goals. So we added an MCAS goal statement in addition to our MAP data. The second change we made was to add areas we need to make improvement in so that when teachers are using the document, they can have a clear and specific reminder of our weaknesses and how to remedy them with the action steps. The action steps this year are again grouped by grade level or vertical teams, so the teachers can work in teams. And it also gives teachers a more focused approach to the school improvement plan in general. If we can skip ahead to, so those are the goals and action steps in that section. But if we can skip ahead to page sixteen, I would like to speak a little bit about our social-emotional goal on this page, because this is something I'm so proud of. Our teachers have seen the need for this and our students, especially since COVID. I'm so proud that we can present programs such as Restorative Justice Circles and Open Parachute and know that the staff will run with it and follow through with fidelity, because that's the kind of staff I have. Our goal this year is to give students access to either Open Parachute or Restorative Justice Circles at least twice a month, and the teachers are doing way more than that. But that is our goal. On page eighteen, just two pages later, we've outlined our professional development plan. And this focuses mainly on the two new curriculums, illustrative math and Common Core Language Arts, or CKLA as you may know it. And we also allow time for continuous training in Open Parachute so the teachers can have an ongoing discussion about that and refine their technique. Next up, on page twenty, if you could turn to page twenty, it would be my pleasure to bring you through a page that is very close to my heart. I became an elementary school teacher for many reasons, but one important reason is the feeling of community, connectedness, and pride that small children get from their local elementary school. Being principal at Bernazani and having an amazingly supportive PTO that shares my vision has been a wonderful experience throughout my entire time there. Family engagement is so important to us that most of our fundraisers are now community events instead of selling wrapping paper or candles. So far this year, we've had a night out for parents to simply socialize and get to know one another at the brick and beam. A very well-attended trunk-or-treat Saturday afternoon for all of our families. That was so fun. A book fair family night with music and fun for all. And next, we're holding a movie night on December ninth for our families to enjoy as well. I do truly appreciate the tireless work that our PTO does for both the students of Bernazani and the entire staff at Bernazani. Their support and dedication is greatly, greatly appreciated. I have to end my remarks by expressing my utmost respect and admiration for the staff at Bernazani. I've always said that the most important decision a principal has to make is who is standing in front of the kids every day. Our staff not only has the best interest of each student at heart emotionally, but they also plan so carefully each and every day to ensure the academic success of every child who comes through our doors. This school would not enjoy the same reputation and success without them, and so my deepest thanks goes to my staff. And at this point, I'd welcome any questions that you have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Cahill?
I love Bernazani. I think, actually, when my kids went, it was named something else before that.
Furnace Brook, Furnace Brook Elementary.
Yeah, it was Furnace Brook. That's how far back, so don't worry. So no, I think everything looks good. My only thing that I, one question is about, which I'm glad that you're going to take some effort to figure this out, but I think it might be different. Is it difficult to find books that are diverse and have different cultures and all that?
No, we were surprised. So it was interesting. The person who, so the person who has our endowment, their daughter went to our school as a student teacher years before me. She passed from an illness, and so they give a scholarship and money to the school every year. And it was, the collection is called Brave Girls, Strong Women, in her name and their daughter's name. So we were finding books about women and like Amelia Earhart, you know what that comes with. And then after ten years, we did run out of books about, you know, for that collection. So I worked with the donors and that's why we switched to diversity so long ago, because we had the money. And then, yeah, no, it's not hard at all.
It's not difficult. It's just getting them interested in finding the right books.
Getting it into their hands, yeah, because we find, we shelve them and then, you know, they're not going to go through. So during special seasons, we'll always make a display so the kids run into the library, they see the books. We need to do that with, or have a diversity section. Because we ended up shelving them by author, you know, instead of having them together.
I know some of the schools do, you know, one book throughout the whole school, one read. Do you do something like that?
We did. We did that probably like six or seven years ago, but we have not done that since COVID.
That might be a way to kind of get those kinds of books. And the only other thing I would ask is that the after-school, do you have a lot of students take advantage of the after-school programs?
We do. I mean, yeah, I think we have six or seven listed there, but then it's about twenty to twenty-five kids per class, like.
For all of those? And any other kind of, like, you know, art or music or a little more different kinds of offerings?
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to do that in the next offering, but again, you're relying on the teachers and what they're comfortable teaching and if they have time at all, you know?
But that's good. That's it. Thank you. Thank you for your due. Thank you.
Mr. Santoro?
Thank you. I am showing how the plan that's in front of us identifies the weaknesses that you saw within your data and then how the plan really encourages improvement on each of those areas. So for that, I congratulate you.
Thank you.
And also congratulations on the all grades being above the state average and exceeding expectations. So congratulations to you and your staff.
Thank you so much, Mr. Santoro.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I agree with Mr. Santoro. I was very impressed with IDing the specific areas of concern in there and knowing that you won't drop the ball on the stuff you've already been so successful at. I am concerned about the, concerned about the kids not seeing themselves. If you've been doing this for seven years. We're just getting started a lot of places. I think the Glean Grant is going to help with this because we need it more than just in the library. We need some of the stuff to be assigned in the classrooms. So I think these guys are going to push you in that direction, so I'm comfortable with that.
And you're right, it is, yeah.
What are the zones of regulation?
Oh, so what they do is, it's a separate program that Mr. Diana, our assistant principal, he's also a counselor on the outside world, uses. And it's really regulating yourself during the day with a scale. So if there is a level five problem, you don't want to have a level nine reaction. And yeah, so it's about like identifying your stressors and then a script of how to react to that.
And I congratulate you on the And I, I congratulate you on the family engagement nights, you have done some wonderful things. I'm very concerned, as Mr. Santoro will be, about the facility request, because it's a DCR request, and that has to be, I don't know how we do it, but that has to be fixed. That really has to be fixed. It's, it's a quagmire over there, if there's any rain at all.
Yeah.
And it smells bad.
And it smells bad, yeah, so I, so Mr. Gudrow put me in touch with Senator Keenan's office, so I am working with them, and I have an update for.
Because it is, it really isn't anything that the city can take care of.
No, because it's a DCR, right.
It's a huge problem. So I'm really, I'm glad that we're trying that. And I agree with Ms. Cahill, I was concerned about your extended day seems weak compared to what the other schools are doing, and don't you do robotics?
Not this, not this.
It's all depending upon finding a teacher?
No, no, we do that after the New Year and get ready for the competitions.
Oh, it should, should have been in there.
It's a partial list, that's why.
That's a partial list?
Well, no, no, that's a full list for this offering, but we start robotics after Christmas. To get ready for the.
We're not giving you credit for any of that stuff, because you didn't. We didn't see it, so you don't get credit for it. Anybody else, Mr. Gudrow?
Yeah, I was a student when Doug McDonnell was there, so congratulations on your feat of 17 years, that's pretty exciting. And, and, you know, like Ms. Cahill said, I love the school, you know, it's a great school, it's a good neighborhood school, your PTO, exceptional, they're really good. I, I want to say also the vocal reflections are so impressive, you should be so proud of that, you know, that, just some of that just resonates, and I can see as a principal how, how that makes you, you proud, there's nothing that would make you more proud. And congratulations on exceeding, you know, just about all of your goals, good stuff, good year.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Hugolee?
Yeah, Bernazani is my neighborhood school, my two sons went through it, and they got an outstanding education there, good foundation. One of them is the vice president of Wood State Street, and one's a state police officer. So, and, and that staff took care of my kids when they went through a real tough time during their early years. I am concerned about the.
The day?
Yeah, and I spoke to you before about the guardrails, there's no guardrails on a very busy street from Adams Street down to the playground area, and I think that, that needs to be addressed as well, because it's just a matter of time before something happens, and there could be a tragedy. So I'd like to see guardrails put up, not necessarily in front of the school, but further down. Thank you very much for your great work.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Gentlemen, anything?
Good, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept this plan, Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Santoro, while in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you.
For the rest of the night? Charlie Bernazani died.
Right, right, I remember, I remember.
Right there at the meeting.
That's sad, is he voting?
Good evening, thank you so much for coming, Mr. Hugolee, welcome to your position, we're thrilled to have you there.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Babcock, for accompanying him this evening, and you may start your plan, you have five minutes to present everything you have to watch.
All right, I will talk really fast. Good evening, Mayor Koch, members of the school committee, Superintendent Mulvey and Assistant Superintendent Perkins, it's my pleasure to be here to present to you on behalf of the staff and families of Snug Harbor, the 2022-2023 School Improvement Plan for Snug Harbor Community School. With me tonight is our assistant principal, Diane Babcock. Before we begin our presentation, I would like to take a moment to thank both Superintendent Mulvey and Assistant Superintendent Perkins for all their support in my new role as the acting principal. Both have been incredibly helpful and provided great guidance as I acclimate to my new position. And I also want to thank the entire SLT for their support. It has been a pleasure getting to know the families and the staff of Snug Harbor these past several months. I am proud to be the principal of a school as inclusive as Snug Harbor, from our amazing pre-K students to our awesome fifth graders. Each day I see how the families and staff care about the students at Snug Harbor. Both work together to make each day a great experience and a successful day for the students at our school. And this extends beyond the academics, which is at the core of what we do, to ensuring that our students feel safe and welcome at Snug. It is an amazing staff dedicated to providing the best possible experience for all of our students. Looking at the data for last year, we see that there are areas in which we need to focus on for this school year. In ELA, we have identified the cluster of key ideas and details as an area of particular emphasis. In mathematics, we had different areas to focus on depending on the grade level. In third grade, we are going to target specific lessons and activity in the areas of measurement and data. In fourth grade, the area we want to highlight is operations and algebraic thinking, and in fifth grade, number and operations and fractions, specifically in dividing fractions, is a key area for us to work on. As we continue the implementation of the illustrative mathematics and CKLA programs in our school, along with continuing the use of small group instruction and centers, we believe that we will address these areas of concern and continue to show growth in all areas. I am happy to highlight the growth that our students have experienced in all grades and subjects last year. Our students have shown growth in all areas as measured by both MCAS and MAP testing. On MAP ELA testing, from fall to spring, our students have shown high levels of growth with our students meeting or very close to meeting the projected RIT growth levels in these grades. In grades three and four, we were close to the national norms, while fifth grade was a little below the norm, they still experienced growth for the year. In mathematics, our students also saw high growth on MCAS and MAP testing. In grades three through five, we experienced an average of 10 points of RIT growth from the fall scores to the spring scores in each grade. In science, as with math and ELA, our students showed growth in grades four and five on the general science MAP assessment. Another area that I would like to highlight is how much growth our CARE students had. Nine out of 14 students who took the alternate MCAS received the highest rating in progressing in ELA. In math, 12 of these 14 students received a rating of progressing. This data shows how much progress our CARE students are making, which is a reflection of the, on the hard work and dedication of the CARE staff and the hard work that our students put in throughout the year. So that brings us to our goals for this year, I'm sorry, our reflection for last year's goals, my apologies. For our 2021-22 ELA goal, the goal was to increase our MAP growth scores. We met or exceeded this in three of the four grades. In fact, we exceeded our goal in these grades by several RIT points. In grade five, while we did not meet our goal, our students did make progress and showed growth. For 21-22, in our mathematics goal, we met and exceeded the goal in all grade levels. We averaged 10 RIT points above the stated goal for the tested grades. In our 21-22 science goal, we showed growth in both grades four and five. In grade four, we were slightly below our target, while in grade five, we exceeded our goal. Last year, for our SEL goal, the student support team selected two questions from the vocal survey to focus on. One in the area of engagement and one in the area of environment. Our goal was for 80% of students to rate these as always mostly true. Under the engagement domain for the question, I can identify at least one adult at school who cares about me as a person, more than 93% of students rated this as always mostly true. In the environment domain with the question, students learned to care about other people's feelings, we were a little surprised to see that number lower with 71% of fourth grade students giving a rating of always and mostly true, but in our fifth grade, 86% of them rated it as mostly and always true. Overall, we're satisfied that our goal met, we met our goal in three of the four measures. Now that brings us to this year's goals. So, when developing our goals for this year, the staff spent time looking at the data and developing action steps that would both address areas we identified as an area of focus while continuing the growth that our students have experienced. So for this year, our math goal is to increase our RIT score in grades two through five by eight, seven, seven, and six RIT points respectively. In order to achieve this goal, we have begun the full implementation of IM at all grade levels, and continue to utilize small group, small group instruction through guided math centers. As part of our curriculum, we will continue to hold math talks and use manipulatives to develop a deep understanding of the mathematics our students are learning. Our math interventionists are working with the classroom teachers and pushing into the classrooms during their math blocks to provide as much individualized instruction as possible, and pulling out small groups that need additional targeted instruction. For our science goal is to increase our MAP RIT scores in grades four and five by three and five points respectively. We will continue to use the Pearson Elevate Science Program and Realize Science Online Program in grades three through five. In our K through two grades, they will use Pearson Science, Scholastic Magazine, STEM Engineering Reader Lessons, and additional programs that align with the science content in the new CKLA reading curriculum. Our fourth and fifth grade students will engage in research projects to develop deeper understanding of student-chosen topics. And in fifth grade, our math-focused teacher will make cross-curricular connections in the areas of measurement and graphing. And at this point, Ms. Babcock will go over our other goals and talk about our extended day activities.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to again present portions of the Snug Harbor School Improvement Plan. I've had the great fortune of being the assistant principal at Snug Harbor for six years, and through that, I've fostered, worked to foster connections with all stakeholders within the Snug community. Tonight, I'm going to highlight our English Language Arts goal, which outlines ways that our students can show growth on the MAP benchmark. More specifically, we are striving for an increase of eight RIT points above the fall average for grade two, an increase of six RIT points for grade three and four, and an increase of four RIT points for our grade five students. Our hope is that this goal can be achieved through our explicit actionable steps. The most essential action step being the strategic rollout of our CKLA. Our dedicated teachers have attended district professional development as well as ongoing professional collaboration within our own school. Next, our school and social and emotional goal focuses on carrying out ways to support our students outside of the parameters of academics. As we continue to rebound from the global pandemic, we look for ways to support the social and emotional well-being of each of our students. With support from administration and the guidance staff, classroom teachers will carry out at least one SEL lesson plan each month. This will be obtained through platforms such as Open Parachute, Community and Restorative Circles, and through lessons that target diversity, understanding, and respecting differences in order to create a more inclusive school environment. This school year, we will also work to promote these same elements in our extended education programs. One such example is our targeted small group academic intervention programs for at-risk students, as well as our student leadership, leadership groups, excuse me, and our highly sought-after athletic programs such as Snug Soccer and Snug Basketball. These eclectic programs encourage students to set goals and in some cases, promote healthy habits.
Thank you, Diane. And the last area that I would like to highlight is our family engagement. Continuing work that was started last year, Diane and I have been working with the PTO offices to reestablish our PTO. The PTO offices have been great to work with this year, and together we are increasing our family engagement in the school and PTO through numerous planned events. Our monthly PTO meetings have been well-attended. In the morning after our PTO meetings, Diane and I hold a coffee café for any parents to come into who are unable to join us for the regular PTO meeting. Working with this group, we have planned several events for this school year. We held a highly successful trunk-or-treat where we had a fantastic turnout of families from all of our classes and grades. This Friday, we're holding a bingo night, and have had numerous families indicate that they will be attending. So working with our PTO, we are planning additional events for families to increase their involvement in their child's school this year. Some of the events are a movie night, a paint night, and other possible events such as a touch truck day. In addition to our PTO events, our guidance and administrative team have brought back our parent-child days for kindergarten through grade two. We've already held three of these, one for each grade level. The turnout has been fantastic, with wonderful feedback from the families who attended. The families come in and they do a craft together, which they then get to take home with them. As a matter of fact, we held one today, and the families worked together, they made a picture frame, and then they put in a photo of their child that was taken by Diane and Scudwin, and then they printed it out, and they were able to take that home with them today. In closing, I would like to thank the superintendent, assistant superintendent, the SLT, Mayor Koch, and the school committee for all of your continued support in all that we do. Your support is critical to the success of our students. I would also like to thank the incredible staff of Snug Harbor, teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, office staff, lunch staff. Their caring is evident every day in all their interactions with our students. They're the reason our students love to come to school each day. Next, I'd like to thank our families for all the support that they provide us and their students each day. Last, I want to thank all of our students. From our pre-K to our fifth grade students, they are the reason we are here today and come to school every day. Their smiles and enthusiasm are contagious and motivate us each and every day. So in closing, I will share with you Snuggies Code, which we recite each morning as part of our announcements. Be safe, be kind, be respectful, and work hard. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, it might have been a little over five minutes, sorry.
Mr. Santoro?
As you're thanking people, it is us that have to thank you for what you and your staff do, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Cahill, any comments, questions?
One, let me see, I like the increase of your family engagement, you know, that's important, especially if you want to build relationships and support for the school. If they feel like they're involved, then they're more likely to help with like the PTO fundraising and things like that, not that it comes to money, but.
It's a wonderful community, we just want them to be involved in what we're doing.
And get them involved, and, you know, they're more likely to get engaged that way. You have a great number of students in your REACH program too, a good percentage, which looks great. And I think, you know, by, by looking at your report and what you presented, you know, you guys deserve a lot of kudos for the work you do, because your population is so diverse in so many different ways that to be able to be successful with the numbers and the scores that you have, I think is, is impressive too, you know? So, thank you for your work and for jumping in, in the middle of the year last year and, and doing the work that you're doing here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have to agree, I think your MAP growth was phenomenal, and that's really so important at this point in time to see that kind of growth, so kudos to the staff there. I also think that the CARE, thank you for the CARES data, because it just adds another element of, and it was incredible data, but it adds another element to what's going on at the school. I'm thrilled to hear about the PTO, I know that's been a struggle a little bit, but having those coffee cafes and having that kind of, the family engagement looks terrific, it really does. So, kudos to you all for doing that, because I know it's, it's a lot more work than, than, you know, just getting through your regular day, so it's, that's really great. I'm a little concerned, but I'm not going to be, I decided I wouldn't be concerned, but I was a little concerned about maybe student behavior issues when I was looking at the vocal survey, like this, what the students perceive as behavior in the building, and I, I think I'm not going to be concerned about that right now, though.
We did notice that when we were going over the vocal, so it's something we're, we're dressed, looking at.
I'll talk to you about it next year. Also, the chronic absenteeism is a little high for, in the numbers-wise, and those are mostly kids who are at risk, so it's, you know, I know we do the best we can with that, but it is a concern of mine. But great diversity there, really is great diversity, diverse diversity, so it's a very rich place for that, for that, and so I really appreciate that. And Mayor Koch, would you like to add something?
Sure, if you don't mind, I'll be less than five minutes.
You don't get five minutes.
Thank you very much for the presentation, and I wish you well. It's a great school community, there's, you feel the spirit when you go into that building. I just, I just want to put out two concerns I, I have in the survey. Page 36, I've been hit by other students more than once in school, 42%. That seems high to me. I know when I was in school, I got hit, but it was from the nuns, it wasn't from other students. And then further down, in my school groups of students, teaser pick and pick on me, pick on one student, I'm sorry, which is 51%, which I find concerning. It's, it's not a criticism, it's just a concern, and if there's any way I can help in these areas, please, please let me know, but.
Yeah, I think we're working with guidance to use the Open Parachute platform to allow students to sort of talk through their, their challenges, their friendship challenges. I think many students, you know, there's friendship challenges that happen at recess. Part of, one of the things that I see as valuable is that I'm out at recess every day, I'm, you know, sort of outside during a low structured time, some allow, sort of allows me to, to kind of restore some of the students', you know, their challenges, so, you know, those little things that we're sort of putting in place to reflect some of the data that came, so just those small little things that we're adding, the Open Parachute, you know, more present at our low structured times, so.
Thank you.
To reiterate that, if there's something else that you think you need as you move through this, you should really come to us, because we want to make sure you have all the tools you need to, to address that concern.
We will, thank you very much for that.
Mrs. Hugolee?
Thank you, great presentation, thank you very much.
present at our low structured times, so.
Thank you.
To reiterate that, if there's something else that you think you need as you move through this, you should really come back to us, because we want to make sure you have all the tools you need to, to address that concern.
We will, thank you very much for that.
Mrs. Bluey?
Thank you. Great presentation, thank you very much. I am also extremely impressed with your family engagement. It's needed to grow, and I'm so glad to see it growing, especially with the, the parent nights, the bingo nights, and the movie nights, and the paint nights. I know it's been something parents have wanted more of there that I've heard of for a long time, and I'm so glad they're incorporating more of those in the school. And love that the touch truck is coming back, that's great. And one thing I would like to point out that I was very glad to see was the 100% in the "my teachers are proud of me when I work hard at school." That says a lot about your school, that right there, that says a lot about the environment that the kids are working in, that they are seeing, that when they work hard, that their teachers are acknowledging that, and that's wonderful, thank you.
Yes, it's an amazing staff, and they work very hard to, to meet the needs of our kids, so, and I was happy, I was thrilled to see that, it was, that was reflected in multiple questions, of similar questions, so yes.
Yeah, the other one, 98%, where my teachers, how is it phrased? That also struck me as, as a really nice, nice thing to say was that my teachers care about me as a person. That, that also said a lot, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bluey?
Yeah, your staff has to be commanded because it's not an easy school to go to every day and to keep your head up, and, so, I mean, and you're doing great work with, with, with those kids.
Thank you, and they come to school every day with a smile on their face, staff and students, so, they love it, so.
Right. The basement flooding, what's the impact?
It.
And where is that?
Yeah, it's in the back of the building. We've been working with the maintenance department as well as Kevin Sagala to address the issue. When we get heavy rains, like, I would not say like today, heavier than this, we will get some water, it comes in the door because the, the drain will clog up on the outside. So we'll, we have to call the Parks Department or DPW, and they will come out and clean out that drain, but we're looking for a more permanent solution, which I'm not entirely sure what that might possibly be, but we now have a, a pump for, to take care of any issues when we, if we do get water in there now, so.
Does it impact any of the materials or?
No, we don't store any materials down there right now. We have our lunch tables down there, but they're up out of the water when we do get some, so.
All right, thank you.
It's a concern, though.
Only when it rains.
With his water, there's mold, so.
Mr. Heinz is aware of it and is working on a permanent solution.
Mr. Gattro?
All my questions asked and all my comments.
I would entertain a motion to accept the plan. Motion. By Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Santarol, all in favor. I thank you both so much.
You're kind, ladies. Have a good evening.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, it's so nice to see you again.
So nice to see you all.
And you both made progression to your plan.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Koch, members of our school committee, Superintendent Mr. Kevin Mulvey, Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Erin Perkins, and the entire superintendent's leadership team. It is such an honor to present our Beechwood Knoll Elementary School Improvement Plan as Principal Marisa Rodriguez. Here with me tonight is our Assistant Principal, Laura Luthini. And together, we will present to you our school improvement plan for the 2022-2023 school year. For the last two years, I have had the great pleasure of working with and learning about the rich community Beechwood Knoll has to offer. The BKS community is that of high expectations of academics, that serves a diverse student body with supportive families and exceptional teachers with invaluable years of experience. At Beechwood Knoll, we begin each day by instilling a sense of pride for being what we like to call a lobster for life. We showcase this by setting our expectations together, by reciting "respect yourself," "respect others," and "respect property" as a whole school over our morning announcements to be ready for our learning in the day ahead. In transitioning back to life post the COVID-19 pandemic, we are excited to shift our focus for this school year. In a thorough analysis of spring benchmark data, it is evident that high achievement and growth was attained during the previous school year, with all goals having significant progress made towards, if not exceeded. Beechwood Knoll's Spring 2022 data shows a lot of bright spots and signs of learning recovery. According to the MAP assessment, the mean RIT score for students in grades two to five in reading, mathematics, and science was above the national norm on nine out of 10 assessments. In grades two through five, the mean RIT scores for English Language Arts and Mathematics exceeded the national norm. In science, students in grades five exceeded the national norm, and our students in grades four scored just shy of the national norm. This did account for 58% of fourth grade students at or above the grade level mean RIT for science. I do want to highlight that for MAP, our fifth grade students in English Language Arts and Science achieved the 91st and 99th percentiles nationally. This extraordinary achievement accounts for 87% of students at or above the grade level mean for English Language Arts and 89% of students for science. According to the Spring 2022 Administration for MCAS, a higher percentage of Beechwood Knoll students achieved meeting or exceeding expectations than the state in five out of seven subject areas. In grade three, the percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations exceeded the state by 14% for English Language Arts and by 9% for Mathematics. In grade four, the percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations was below the state by 1% for English Language Arts and by 8% for Mathematics. This area of focus does show improvement for the cohort that increased from 27% of students meeting or exceeding expectations in Mathematics as third graders to now 35% of students meeting or exceeding expectations in Mathematics as fourth graders. In grade five, the percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations exceeded the state by 22% for English Language Arts, by 3% in Mathematics, and by 35% in Mathematics, I mean, I'm sorry, in Science, with an astonishing 78% of students meeting or exceeding expectations for the Spring 2022 MCAS. This analysis provides evidence of continuous high achievement for the 2021-2022 school year for the students of Beechwood Knoll, and we are very proud of these accomplishments for our students as well as our teachers and families that supported this. For the 2021-2022 school year, the Beechwood Knoll Elementary School's first goal was for English Language Arts. For the primary grades of kindergarten to grade two, our goal was to increase the number of students at or above the composite score benchmark utilizing the Amplify Dibbles Eight Assessment. This goal was exceeded for students in grade one and grade two, with an increase to 81% of students at or above benchmark. For kindergarten, some progress was made towards this goal, with 44% of students at or above benchmark. This progress accounts for a decrease of students significantly below benchmark from the fall, as well as an increase of students now at benchmark in the spring. These results show that all kindergarten students made progress in their reading proficiency despite not meeting this goal. For grades three to five, our goal was to show evidence of growth in reading indicated by an increase in RIT points measured by the MAP assessment. It is important to note that all of our goals were set to exceed the national norm for growth last year. This goal was exceeded in fifth grade, and for students in grades three and four, this goal was not met, but significant progress was made towards, with grade three increasing by 12 points, which was just shy of our 13-point goal, and grade four having 69% of students meeting their individual growth projection. These indicators show that all upper elementary students made progress in reading despite only partially meeting our English Language Arts goal. The Beechwood Knoll Elementary School's second goal was for Mathematics. Our goal for students in grades two to five was to show evidence of growth indicated by an increase in RIT points measured by the MAP assessment. Like ELA, our goals were set to exceed the national norm. This goal was met in grade four and exceeded in grade five. For grades two and three, this goal was not met, but significant progress was made towards, with grade two increasing by 13 points, just shy of our 16-point goal, and grade three increasing by nine. These indicators show that all students made progress in Mathematics despite only partially meeting our Mathematics goal. Our third goal was for Science. Our goal was for students in grades four and five to show evidence of growth in Science indicated by an increase in RIT points measured by MAP. This goal was partially met, with students in grade four making progress towards with an observed growth of three points, and students in grade five exceeding our set growth measure. Finally, for the 2021-2022 school year, the Beechwood Knoll Elementary School's fourth goal was for social-emotional learning. Our goal was for staff to incorporate restorative practices to ensure that all students feel safe, supported, and validated within the Beechwood Knoll community. This goal was met as evidenced by formal and informal observations and educator evidence. Kindergarten to fifth grade classrooms incorporated, incorporated restorative practice circles in their classroom at least once per month. Additionally, three targeted restorative practice circles were implemented with the classroom teacher, principal, and guidance counselor to solve incidents in the fifth grade. Finally, staff also engaged in four restorative circles at their professional development meetings to ensure that all adults also felt safe, supported, and validated within our community. For the 2022-2023 school year, the baseline data from this fall has been analyzed to inform our goals in reflection with the Spring 2022 achievements. We felt that it is important when setting our goals to analyze not only the achievement of what we, what we know our students accomplished last year from fall to spring, but to now analyze where the classes are in front of us with the Fall 2022 data. Across kindergarten to grade two, our classes are entering with a higher percentage of students at or above benchmark in reading than last fall. For grades three to five, our students are entering with a mean RIT for Fall 2022.